Call this meeting to order at the time 6:00 P.M.
On the dot.
On the dot. Good afternoon, everybody. This is a meeting of the Patience Order Commission. Today, June the 6th. The first item is roll call. Yes, yes ma'am. Tulato Cazares.
Present.
Cindy Itantú.
Here.
Manuel Erangel.
Here.
Tony Narváez. Jim Valmaras.
Present.
Terenina Portilla. Daniel Sadepa.
Here.
Adolfo G. Martínez. And Hector J. García.
I'm present.
For the, for the record, we do have one.
Motion to excuse all that were absent?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Let us stand for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the God of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, for liberty and justice in all.
Motion to approve the minute from May 16, 2024?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Madam Chair, can we, the next item is, what, citizen comments?
Yes. Are there any citizen comments?
We don't have anybody registered as a point at this moment.
Okay.
Madam Chair, I would make a motion that we move the presentation to the tail end since we're going to be going through this pretty fast. But if we lose quorum, we can still have the presentation.
Okay.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okey dokey. Sony cases, right?
Yeah.
This is a public hearing. Anyone?
Amending.
Amending the zoning case. No, amending the zoning ordinance map of the city of Laredo by authorizing the issuance of a conditional use permit for building, material sales, cabinet and countertop shop manufacturing with outside storage access used on lots two and three Commerce Plaza Development, Unit One, located at 1602 and 1702 Commerce Drive. This is a public hearing. Anyone who wish to speak in favor of this item?
Yes? Would you, would you like to hear a presentation before the public hearing?
Sure. Okay. Thank you, Madam Chair. For the record. This don't, um. This item is the overview of the applicant's. Seferino Garcia is the owner. The property description is lots two and three Commerce Plaza Development, Unit One, located at 1602 and 1702 Commerce Drive. The zoning request is a conditional use permit. The proposed use is a building material sales cabinet and countertop shop manufacturing with outside storage accessory use. Letter sent were forty-one, four, zero against zero. Uh, the background, uh, there has been some citations at this location. On February 18th of 2022, a citation was issued for operating a stone marble granite manufacturing shop in the commercial zoning B3 zoning district and is prohibited according to the City of Laredo Land Development Codebook, Article Section 24.63. On the same day, another citation was issued for operating the business without a certificate of occupancy and is in violation of the City of Laredo Code of Ordinance, Article Five, Section 18-22, in violation with the ICC Building Code, Section 111. Uh, the same citations were issued on, uh, April 25th of 2023 and on January 14th of 2024. Location view. Aerial view. Street view. Zoning signage. Zoning overview. Future nonuse. Staff recommendation, staff does not support the proposed conditional use permit? Not the proposed motion. Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you. The, let's remember, this is a public hearing. Anyone wish to speak for? Please come up.
Hi, Mr. Lo, good afternoon. Um, I had came, it's like a recent from last time, right? And what I just stated.
State your name.
Oh, Seferino Garcia Jr. Uh, my father's the, I'm not the owner. My father's the owner. I'm just speaking for him. He's really sick right now, so he's really ill right now, so he couldn't, he couldn't make it. But just as I said before, like, um, he's had the business. He's actually been in business since like 1984, somewhere around there. And we've had that place there at Commerce since 1999, I believe. Until now, we've always done the same thing. Um, I think we stayed like in, as far as enclosing, enclosing the area where we, where we cut the stone. And as of now, we are, we already enclosed it all. And, um, the last time I was a little bit nervous because I know we spoke about the citations and like how we didn't do anything. But every time we got a citation, we actually did like, because at first it was like, there was like nothing there. And then we added like a, kind of like a.
But in the first citation, we should have completely done it all. That way you wouldn't be here.
Yeah.
So right now, you're telling me that you already went in there. You've completely closed.
Yeah, now it's completely.
What everything they wanted?
Yes, yes.
That's all I wanted to know.
And, and I was kind of reading the, like, the list of the things. And I think pretty much we already like have like all of, like, everything here.
So you're, you're pretty much, uh, you're comfortable with a, with a conditional use permit, but you're, you're, uh, you agree to all seventeen items, actually?
Yes, I, I, I believe we already have like everything in place for all the seventeen items. The only thing I think that we really needed was just to enclose the, the cutting area, which we already did. It was finished yesterday.
Nineteen, not seventeen, nineteen, right?
Yeah, the nineteen. If, if I may, um, we, we did advise the applicant that we added two more conditions.
Okay.
Um, we added number eighteen, uh, ground vibrations. We were just concerned, we don't know exactly the nature of the cutting sort of machines that are used, even though they'll be inside. We just wanted to make sure that we.
They have a coffee number.
Yeah, that we make sure that the, the vibrations aren't such that they affect the surrounding neighbors. And that we wanted to address the outside storage. That's one of the things that's not allowed in the, in the underlying zone. So we wanted to make sure that outside storage of the slabs is allowed, but all other outside storage would be prohibited. So we have spoken with him. He is an agreement with this, with those two additional, um, uh, conditions. The, uh, our position is not to support, but we were not in support because this seemed like the applicant continued to pursue the cutting outside. So he has submitted, per the direction of the commission, the updated narrative where he agrees that everything will be conducted within the wholly enclosed building. And so we would be amenable to change our position if that is the case.
And who would, who would verify that all these, all the cutting has been done enclosed?
It would, there would be no inspection. We, once the, in the, the, uh, the CUP would be issued, if there would be a violations, then it would be exposed to further citation and, or possibly revocation.
Are you okay with that?
Yes.
Okay. Question for staff. How many revocations have you done in the last year for violations?
At all.
The year before?
Zero. Never ever, ever have done one.
So is the question of us not being able to enforce it? Or question of us not being able to, uh, put ourselves in a position where we can see it? Or we just?
It never has been.
Everybody's complying?
No, not necessarily. It's, they typically pursue citation. It, it's handled through the, the courts.
Ah, yeah, with the, with the building, the board?
Yeah. Zoning enforcement officers, uh, when there's complaints, it's all based off of complaint basis, for the most part. And, uh, they issue citation and it goes to, to the court system.
Is that what would have generated all those citations?
That's correct. Yeah, there was some complaints from the surrounding neighbors of the noise, the dust, uh, and the, the cutting activities that were happening, um, adjacent to their properties.
So we couldn't even close him down when he didn't have a conditional use permit?
No.
Right, we couldn't close him down?
We didn't pursue closing them down.
And now, now that he may get his condition use permit, I think it's really going to change.
Well, the conditional use permit will address the outdoor activities.
So maybe, maybe give us perhaps a more avenue?
We, we.
So Roland, would you like to?
Though the applicant is telling us that they will, they will.
If I may, Roland Osano with Building Department, acting building official. The, the, if the conditional use permit is, uh, approved, then the applicant can apply as a new business to obtain a certificate of occupancy. And at that point, we can verify that all these nineteen points will be addressed.
Addressed.
Uh, also, that, um, as far as the enforcement question that was asked, you know, we do not have staff to be going out there. But what we do is we have a policy. If there is a 311 complaint, we will address. And so I'm not sure if this was the case on this, but that's typically what we do, you know? So as far as enforcing, you know.
That was another question. So right now, I saw they, they don't have a certificate of occupancy currently?
Well, the applicant states that the, the business was initiated in the, the nineties.
Okay.
Right? When they went out to investigate the complaint, they did ask for the certificate of occupancy. I'm assuming in the intervening thirty years, maybe they misplaced their certificate of occupancy. So that's why they were cited for, uh, non, not having it. They can approach the building department for reprinting if they can provide evidence that they had, did have it. But if there's no evidence can be found, they would need to apply.
But the onus is on the business owner to provide that certificate to the city?
That's correct.
Right, so that brings me to the, this next question. If, if they don't have proof of a certificate of occupancy today, how do they adjudicate their citations? If they couldn't prove that they had a certificate of occupancy or that they ever applied for one, how, how were they able to get those citations?
I'm not, I'm not aware if they have had gone to court with, with their citations.
So are these still pending? Have these not been resolved?
Possibly. All we have is, is just the citation history. We do not have resolution or what the courts have done, if they have done or if it's not.
But that question was asked the last time they brought this, uh, petition forward. Did we not find out whether those?
I apologize. I, 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 we, we didn't have it, that we were supposed to find that out.
My concern is that we're hearing a case for zoning, amendment of the zoning, in that area without having adjudicated these issues that have been plaguing this area for now going on two years. And, and unless they've already made an effort to, to cure some of these things, at least address the citations, how can they come forward and, and, and ask for this? They need to hear that first and then come back to us.
Under the code, uh, being a violation or not going through the court process fully would not prohibit them from being able to. In fact, in most cases, when going through adjudication, the, the final disposition is deferred so that they can come through this process.
My understanding that the last meeting when that question was asked, they, their answer was, there's nothing pending, everything.
That's what they told us.
Yes, that's what, that's what.
That's what they, they paid or whatever they done.
Actually, the judge was the one who told us to take this step, like this, this step.
That's what happened.
Again, this is a court of compliance, and that's why I think that's a, a, a good court for us to have because it's not a gotcha court. It's, they just want you to comply. But if they haven't complied over the last couple of years, I'm just concerned that they won't comply. And I'm going to open that door.
Right.
And you don't have the enforcement capabilities unless somebody files a complaint.
Well, if I may, again, uh, that we are coming forward with a, uh, amendment to this. There is a question on municipal court where, is it existing? Is it not? Because right now, the way the wording says it for new business. So where do you draw the line? Is it new or existing? I've been there three days, it's existing. So, so the issue becomes, so the issue become now that we're, we're writing for. New and existing. And so if there is, or there was a, um, a, um, how do I say it?
Certificate?
Like, if they did have a certificate of occupancy, then they just need to replace it. It's, it's a much simpler process. But if not, and, and through the, um, COVID, when the governor did establish that half occupancy can occupy, there was a lot of businesses that didn't have a certificate of occupancy. And so what we did is we used the new business process that we had so that we can go out there and inspect to make sure it meets the minimum requirements. And so that's still the case. Now we're going to come forward with a new, um, amendment to it to, to address existing again. But that will still be, um, again, if somebody calls, then it complains.
Plus, you don't know what was on that sheet thirty years ago, thirty-five years ago.
And that was going to be my next question.
It could have been perfectly, it could have had everything they needed to, to open it. And now what happened in the last thirty years?
Requires me.
That's right. It, 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 uh, what they call.
But at that point, they're legal nonconforming. I mean, they've, they've done all the right things when they opened it, but things have changed since then. But what, but do you all have records of that? Madam Chair, that would be my question.
On the permitting side, we have records up to oh seven. I mean, back to oh seven.
Eighteen oh seven or?
Seventeen oh seven. Two oh seven.
Two thousand seven, just to be clear. And so, uh, but if they were there in ninety-five, who knows what? We would probably need to do some research. Most probably, we would need to do a complete, um, new business inspection.
Okay.
Go through the whole process to make sure it's in compliance and within code.
Are they grandfathered in? Are they not grandfathered in? Were they wording all that? Yeah, thirty-five years, it's possible.
Now that they can provide us something, it, it would be difficult for us to, to address it.
Well, taking the case again, I.
Thirty-five years from now.
Uh, thirty-five years from now. No, um, what I do want, um, to see is that he did complain. He did try to be in compliance of last meeting to this meeting. So he ha, he is having, how to say? He's trying to.
Be proactive.
To be proactive and be able to be in compliance so he won't have these issues again, right? So, um, thank you. But I just, this is a public hearing, and I just want to know if there's anybody here to speak against this item?
I'd had one question for the applicant. Of, of the nineteen items that are here, how many of these have you already completed?
I, I think we have all of them.
All of them, yeah.
I think the only one that we needed was to enclose the cutting area, which we already did.
Thank you. So like I just stated, this is a public hearing. And can I have a motion to close the public hearing? And what are the wishes of the commission?
Motion to, to close the public hearing and, and, um, oh, first and second, yeah. And support, oh, not support staff, but, uh,
Grant.
Grant permission as long as it's following the nineteen, the nineteen orders that the city put out there.
So we have motion by Mr. García, second by Mr. Valmaras. All in favor? Aye. Against? Motion carries. Now. Review and consideration of the following master plans. Review of the revision of the Gator Point Master Plan. The intent is residential and commercial. For the record, applicant is Martinez Land Development, engineer's top sites of a group. The proposed use is residential and commercial. And the zoning for the six hundred and seventy lot development is R1, R1A, and B4. Location view. Aerial view. The revised master plan. Comments from planning. Fire. Traffic safety. That is, uh, the one highlighted is text dot. I apologize. We, we didn't add them, include them into the packet, but we do, are presenting them here at the PowerPoint. The one that says traffic, traffic safety? Yes, it's just text dot. Can you leave it there just a little bit? What does it say? Must have access easement within the lots. A budding. A budding. Um, three fifty-nine text dot. Will not approve multiple access points for the commercial phase. That's the one that we don't have? All right.
Yes. Madam Chairman, I'd like to clarify on that comment. Uh, we did receive those after the packet was released, but we did notify the engineer in writing via email before the meeting. So he does have those. But they were not part of the packet. That's why we're including them under light of the presentation.
Perfect. Okey dokey. So you. I guess the proposed motion. Um, okay. And kaka. So any comments from the engineer, Rick?
Good evening, Madam Chairman, members of the commission. Ricardo Villarreal, top site civil group. I don't, never, I'm just playing. No, we're, we're good with the, with the textile comment. We do have one issue that maybe we can just clarify. As doing future research, uh, which is number fourteen, comment number fourteen. We had, uh, we can go to the master plan? Or I'll, I'll show it here better on, uh, where I can point. On, on the previous master plan, we had a street that was connecting to the west neighbor. As we did more research and, um, and we looked at this, and I'm, I'm going to bring in an aerial on this. Let me get a closer one. So the adjacent properties are. So this is our phase one. Pardon, we don't have a, an updated aerial of this. So the current master plan, phase two, which is already built, phase three that is coming in tonight is here. And that's where the, uh, the roadway was going in. This development here is in the county. Uh, well, the back part is in the county. Um, and in between, there are one acre lots, um, on both sides. And those one acre lots, they're being used right now. They're fenced, they're being used either for residential, industrial, parking trucks, everything. So, um, this road here, which is an access easement for all the lots, and they're all loaned individually, and there's an undivided interest for that easement. Next to that, to further west, this is already developed industrial park with a road down the middle that doesn't have an access point also to connect to our road. This development over here has interconnections that also doesn't have a road that would connect to our road. So that was the point that we deleted it from our master plan because in the future, there really wasn't going to be a connection to that. And, um, that was part of one of the revisions on there. So I, I guess it's mainly up for discussion on this that I would like to discuss on, on. I know the subdivision was referenced here, uh, section three, two, dash, L, which basically states, you know, you want interconnectivity if and so that the neighbor is able to connect. That it is in the plan to connect. In this case, we're the last ones coming in. And, you know, we're trying to retrofit something that probably should have been done at the beginning. And so that's why the reason that, that, that we deleted it.
Can you put with your pen, with where, where the road?
So roughly the connection point that is right here.
Okay.
The reason I'm showing the aerial, which it's this road here in phase three that we had to punch out, which roughly comes out to about here. And I'm showing the aerial because I couldn't get the aerial on this, uh, in, in time, showing that these are all one acre lots. There's about thirty-five of them. They've been sold out, individual owners. Maybe there's about two or three owners that own multiple lots on there. But it isn't one developer, right? So it would have to be one person, that specific person developing. Plus, there's an undivided interest on that thirty-three foot easement that goes north and south for each one of them. So, uh, if we had to put odds on this, odds is, is never going to happen. Even if that were the case, to go even further west, the existing industrial park that's there, that's warehouses, also doesn't have a, a eastern connection, a tire, or a western connection. Again, that was mainly just to, uh.
I do want to show the aerial real quick and, thanks. So where we're coming from.
The budget that this guy has.
Sorry, Rick, sorry.
Sit there. No.
So the area in blue is, is the phase that he's bringing in right now. Now, as for the subdivision ordinance, he is showing the connection off to the east, right here. And in the prior iteration he had, he was, he had a connection over to the west. So we have been in discussions with the Gajona family. They're the owners of this tract. What it is, it's a family partition that was never actually platted. So they've come to us on multiple occasions wanting to plat. They haven't quite hired the engineer yet, but.
No, and, and, and Gajona was the original owner.
Right.
And they got sold off individually. Now, there's multiple Gajonas in that family. So there was like five different ones. And they each had three or four. The reason I know a little bit more about the sales on this is that my wife was one of the real estate agents that, that handled this. So these were, we did surveys, individual surveys for all thirty-five of them. So I know Gajona is the common name, but different owners out of all that. So again, it was more of a, we didn't want to build a street that's going to go nowhere, that's going to be there for nothing, and it's just going to be a sore for the development.
Right. So I, I mean, I guess what we could do as a potential alternative is maybe leave it open-ended. So in the discussion that we've had with them, they do want to plat. They don't have a tie-down. But we were also looking in area because one, our subdivision ordinance, like, uh, Mr. Villarreal said, it does need to provide the connections to the adjacent tracks. And then the other is when the Gajonas are to develop, because of our subdivision ordinance has a cap on the maximum street dead end, uh, length of a dead end street, we would want a connection more or less in that general area. So maybe potentially deferring it to another phase to the north, but try to work with the adjacent landlords. I know it's difficult because they have approached us, but they have not submitted anything concrete. So that's why we're looking for, uh, that connection over to the west. Are you okay with that, Rick?
Yeah, more of a question for, what would we need to kind of solidify it? Like, in other words, I guess, so they're one acre tracks.
Right.
And if the road goes through your one acre, you're done. You're, it's nothing, it's worth nothing.
Right, right.
Yeah, so, um, you don't get, you're not left with anything on either side. You can't develop a house, you can't do anything. So it would either be, have to be sold to the city to build or, and that, that's where our train of thought is. I like your idea. If somebody comes in and, and provides that east-west connector, the, the secondary issue, because we were like, all right. You never know, right? But it always comes, chances are, it's probably not going to happen. The other one is the undivided interest, the thirty-three foot undivided interest that goes in between the lots, right? That's owned technically by everybody. Everybody would have to sign up to build a road. They would have to build the road, uh, as part of a, and they would also have to give, I'm going to go ahead and say eight feet, nine feet on each side to make it a fifty foot right away for the city. That makes it a little bit more difficult. Not trying to skirt away from this. I understand the intent of the ordinance, which I applaud the, uh, planning department now citing the specific ordinances. Makes it a lot easier for us as well. So thank you for that. In this case, it's, it's one of those that we worked backwards, right? I like the idea. Let's keep it open. I, I don't mind doing it, keeping it open on, from the future phases. And as we come in, let's try to figure out if we can find one, um, right? I, I can't promise that we'll find one. Again, I'll keep the same odds, but at least it keeps it open.
That's very possible that it's not going to be possible.
Maybe somebody comes in and says, hey, you know what? I bought all thirty-five. All right, let's do that. And we can, we, we, we can certainly.
And, and they may never even come to plat. I guess maybe, well, we, we will see, uh, phase three and further down on the agenda. Maybe push this maybe to the, to the next adjacent to try and maybe resolve something with the adjacent property owners and reach out to them.
If we do come, we can put something in the plat, like, or in, in, in the master plan, in the plat. If we do come with another phase on that adjacent thing, we revisit, uh, with Rafa. I'll make sure now to make sure that when we both come in, we already tried with the adjacent landowner and we can't, we can't do anything. So.
Yes, and this is a way, again, to give them the opportunity for them to be able to plat.
Right, exactly.
In the situation that they are now, they'll never be able to get utilities or anything like that. I mean, it's convenient for them to do it. They're going to do what they're going to do, but we, you can't.
So we had an issue here. It's the county. And, and it just happens with these bowling alley tracks that if you're in the back, right? You have to bring up two thousand linear feet of water line just to get a meter, right? So when you put that into economic perspective, I mean, we all know that, nobody would do that. It just doesn't, it's not feasible. So that's why these tracks are being used more for either storage or a little ranch house where, you know, that, that's basically where, where it's going to be. None unless, in my opinion, none unless some type of capital improvement program comes in with right-of-way taking, is anything going to be done really in this area? Or somebody comes and buys all of them out, and now we're talking. The possibility of leaving that plat note open. So in the future, if that does happen, boom, we connect.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So how would we change that comment or?
So, how would we change that comment or...
How would we rephrase that comment? And I have, I have a question for the engineer and for Rafa, yeah, you're there. Right in the middle, adjacent, you stated that they were some industrial?
So, the bowling alley that I was talking about, the one acre tracks? Yeah, that's that's one, I guess, development? The development that almost mirrors the same dimension as that one, it has industrial tracks on there. So, I don't wanna make, I mean, I think we we came up with a good agreement. That connects, you also don't want industrial trucks coming through ours, so, I mean, it it goes, it keeps on, it... I don't wanna, I don't, we can definitely kick the can down the road on this one, because I think this is a good one to do, just in case, because we understand that we want multiple access points on our end too, but we just don't want to build a road that will never be used.
And and to add to that, I know there are some industrial uses there, but the fact that this is out in the county and they don't have...
They're unzoning, that's why they're abutting to this.
I guess that was where your question was, they just don't have that zoning authority.
They don't have the zoning authority.
I mean, so, pushing it, so if you'll notice, whoops, on the screen.
Because you can't use your pen. So, here on the screen, we do have this connection right, whoops, right here to the east. And he originally had it here, I mean, potentially, maybe exploring it in phase four up here, potentially, when that phase come in, and then, so we don't delay this one.
And and just in case our verbiage changes or anything, I I mean, you know, connection to the to the west to be revisited at the next phase that abuts the the western line. You know, because if my phase grows bigger or whatever it is, you know...
Something to... Yeah, again, just to just to keep in mind that we want to be able to have you build it out, the adjacent landlord, so they can plat in the future.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. What are the wishes of the commission? Who's to make a motion? Who's gonna make a motion? Who's gonna...
What's the desired motion which you'd want?
Yeah, we're waiting for the wording.
The wording is...
Wanting to go ahead with the with the plan?
Well, to move forward, but we would definitely want the connection to the west on the next, I mean...
On the third or the third, fourth phase.
On the next phase.
But, I mean, it has to be included.
Yeah, connection to the west, western track, to be done at the next phase that abuts the western boundary line.
We'll just add that to to that to that number.
So, the wording for the fourteen right now is this master plus revision removed a connecting street to the west, add the street again in order to provide access to adjacent track. So, what we need, we need to rephrase is...
The second part.
The second part, right? Or the first part?
Fourteen?
Correct.
Well, he's got, he's got his next phase, his phase four.
Yes. Amending the motion would be approving, right? Approving to accept the revision of item number fourteen. And planning, planning item number fourteen, and scratching out at this, the second part, and adding... An alternative connection on the west side when adding a... The fourth phase.
I hate to be, but I have two phase threes in there, so that phase four might turn into phase five. So, I I just think it's, I just think it's more of a, just...
The next phase?
The the next phase that abuts the western boundary line, whether it's phase four, phase five.
I mean, the thing is that as long as that road gets built.
The next phase would be better.
Not that it gets left out.
No, 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 well, I I and I I think we're gonna revisit the same topic again, like, if we talk to the neighbor and stuff like that, or...
Okay, well...
Well, I I mean, we can, well...
Madam Chair, question for staff, what what's the, what's the mechanism to 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 hold that in place? To make sure that's it, that's brought forward the way you all want it, if we make motion to accept the revision with with an amendment to item fourteen?
Always complying with, complying...
Is there, I mean, is there a note that you put on the master plan? What's what's the mechanism of to have him?
Our our issue is this, basically what was explained. Come come phase fourteen, if the but, the adjoining landowner on phase fourteen, I guess if they say, no, I don't want this street, I'm never gonna put a street. And and so, if we go to the next route, the next route, the next route, unfortunately, we're gonna be here with the same issue as like that street's never gonna get built. Now, that doesn't mean that we're not gonna revisit it, we won't, we'll we'll definitely revisit it on whatever phase it comes in, and and we'll try to get that street in, I just don't know.
For us to cut it and move on, what's your recommendation on wording? So, we can get to that.
Okay, well, to bring it in on the on the next northernmost phase.
So, then, motion to accept the revision of this master, the Gater Point master plan with an amendment to item fourteen that allows them to bring that westbound connection at the next phase.
Northernmost phase, north, north phase, northern, northern phase.
Second.
Put in favor?
Thank you.
Against? Motion passes. A B review and consideration of the Bota subdivision, the Pines Addition Master Plan, the intent is residential.
For the record, applicant is Cali Group, engineers by consulting, propose uses residential, and the zoning for this fifty lot development is R1 and AG. Location view. Aerial view. The proposed plat. Comments from planning. Fire. Traffic safety, parks and leisure, and the proposed motion.
Any comments from the engineer, Rick?
Jose Castillo, we're consulting, representing Cali Group, and we concur with all the comments with the exception of number three. Just because, well, they're saying that we need access to a fully constructed street, and we have two accesses, so I don't think that comment applies, we have two accesses that are connected to to, to fully built streets. And here, don't have any questions.
Any questions from the commission? I have a question. For staff, yeah.
On number three.
So, on the, let me bring up the area. Number three on under planning or...
Under planning, yes.
Under planning, a portion of La Bota.
So, this here is the development that they're proposing, this is, this is the master plan. And they've got some connections here. So, to this existing, let me connect it here to this existing Coward Cove, and this existing Longspur Court, right? But they also need to connect up to this one, which is the La Bota Parkway. This road extension is first, is not quite built all the way to the end. So, we just need some coordination with the engineering department to see how this is gonna get built.
And the other roads, the one that's right here?
Yeah, everything else, they'll they'll be building that, they're responsible for that. Within the limits of the master.
And the Tarras Road there?
Pardon me?
The the one that you can see on this side? That one.
Yeah, they'll, they'll, they build that, they have to build that.
They have to build that one.
Yeah, that's part of their subdivision.
And you all, you all are okay with building?
Excuse me?
And you all are okay with that?
Yes, to building that segment. Yes, to to, you know, like, within this phase, they're building this segment of that will eventually connect to to a, to La Bota Parkway. Right now, we have fifty-one lots that, you know, like, don't need a ninety-foot right-of-way, and we have two connection points, that, two two streets that are fully developed and fully built.
But I I also see, well, I have a question for staff or for Mr. Castillo. I also see that it says coordinate with the engineering department and the HOA for La Bota development for for the completion connection of the roadway to access to a fully constructed street is required. That's what you're stating?
You know, and eventually, you know, right now, that's our master plan, because, you know, like, the rest is is zone ag. So, really, we're, that's it, you know, like, if the the rest gets rezoned and we have more, then more... More lots will warrant the, you know, that. But right now, we can call engineering, you know, start coordinating with them and everything, but this phase, I mean, we have the connection points, and and at this point, it is the only phase, really.
Yes? Hello?
This is Quan Salinas, for the record. I I was wanting to see if, oh, I think Oscar, what he was referring to is is these two connection points here. This one here and this one here. So, it meets the land development code now for the two accesses. And we spoke to the city engineer and Mr. Chavez, asked us just to verify with the fire department that it meets the code, and it does. So, we got clarification from the fire department as well. And the the comment is on this big right-of-way here that connects to La Bota over here. I think during this last phase, they paved it up to here, to this point, but didn't pave it all the way down to here.
That's the issue.
That was the issue. So, what we're wanting to do is kind of take a page from what the previous master plan just did, and maybe defer the comment to the next phase, since all the rest of this master plan is, this is the only part that's actually zoned for residential currently, everything else is ag. So, it's just ranchland, so until we have, we have, we have to come back, get like a rezoning approved, then come back with another phase for this master plan to provide any more lots. So, currently, it meets the land development code requirements with these two connections. But in the future, if we are able to add any more lots down here, and especially to get down to this river road that eventually will come through here.
And that was my next question.
Yes.
The Riverbank Road. Because I know Textor, we have vista, que todo. Thank you for coming. Because I know Textor has been doing like an alignment for the Riverbank Road on that area. And and that was the only question I was, I was, I wanted to address, that the issue, the main issue, right, of that area is that La Bota only has one entrance and all of that, right? But if, in in the HOA, and I already saw what you said, what you specified, I I see, in my opinion, I see everything would be clear, but where would be the...
The, what is shown there comes from, it it came from planning and zoning, I think, that's the latest...
Alignment.
Alignment, yeah, from from the, from the story that the city did.
And and by doing this here and actually building out this section from here to here, we just bring it that much closer to to contributing to the River Road project.
Of course.
At some point, it would be required here to to keep developing to be able to build the road out. And in my opinion, this is the most important part of the roadway, just because it'll finally give La Bota a second out.
A second out.
Which is what we're aiming for, in part by by developing this section. This is the only piece we can develop now, so we're gonna do this. But eventually, we plan to keep moving down if we can get a zone change and all that, which which we'd be coming for in the future. But for now, this meets the land development code, and we're just asking if you could please approve the master plan with that deferral of the comment to connect this roadway to a further section. Once we get down over here, then we wouldn't meet the requirements anymore, we would, we would have to build it up at some point, or at least coordinate with the HOA and everybody involved, since, since we don't own this property here.
Perfect.
Thank you, appreciate it.
What are the wishes of the commission? Any, anyone have a question? Would say to move forward? Motion to...
Motion to move forward?
Yeah, my, the motion to move over number, and remove number three to move to the second, to the next phase. But but still having the connection with...
Let me just, I do like to make just a little bit of a recommendation, so, or just a little bit of background. So, what what they said was correct, this la, boundary line right here is the limits of their subdivision.
Right.
Which is also the limits of La Bota, okay? So, the La Bota Parkway, as per the plat, comes down and touches the, their property boundary. Unfortunately, at some point, the roadway does not appear to, it does not seem to have been built, right? So, yes, they are developing these tracks, but all the traffic that they're gonna generate would be shuffled onto these two streets. Now, they are building a major roadway that's slicing through the middle that would need to connect. Unfortunately, that roadway is not there now. So, from our comment is to, for them to coordinate with the engineering department and to coordinate with the HOA as to how that can get built, because it is not in their property, but it is part of a previous plat that was already filed for record as as on the books. The thing is that that just, that connection is just not there, it's there on paper, it's just not there on the ground. So, it's it's, I mean, it's vital that that connection gets built.
So, it needs to stay...
Well, it's vital to stay, to be built, but it doesn't have to be built, now it can be built in the next phase.
Or or the or the comment could stay, but it, for the coordination to occur during the one-stop shop process, to see how that can occur.
If I may, the the reason that this, that this, I think, is it a ninety-foot right-of-way?
Yes.
There's a ninety-foot right-of-way coming through, and the and the reason it's coming through is because in the thoroughfare planet, it's actually supposed to come all the way through and connect down here to the Ectado subdivision to be able to give it a second out, which is the point of it. So, if we can never build a river road, and we can never develop the rest of this, the whole point of that roadway there is so that we can actually continue there. So, if we never get to our second phase, that big boulevard there, it kind of doesn't serve a purpose unless it actually connects somewhere. That's the reason it's so wide. If it, if it only was gonna connect to this section here, there wouldn't be a ninety-foot right-of-way just coming up to this section. And and typically, if this was the only piece that we were ever gonna develop, there's a piece in the land development code that calls for, you know, if if the thoroughfare plan goes through your property, but it's way too wide for something that you would actually need, and in this case, we would only need for fifty-three lots, then you're only, well, not that you're only required to build, but most of the time, or we've done it two or three times in the past, where we get the city cooperation in there. This is private, so it's not gonna happen, but the whole point is that we only have fifty-three lots, and currently, that's the only thing that we're gonna be allowed to develop out here, the master plan only has these. So, the whole point of having the big right-of-way coming down, which we're still gonna build in this section, is that it goes all the way through. So, if we never come through with another section, that right, that huge right-of-way there is almost, it's overdesigned if it never goes through. The whole point of that thing is to go through all the way to the mine's road. So, that's the only we think, reason we think it's it's appropriate to to push it to the next phase, because if no other phase ever gets built, then that portion there was kind of never supposed to be there to begin with.
Yeah, because because the right-of-way is there, the, in other words... Yeah, it's part of the adjacent plat, it's just that the the construction is not there, the right-of-way is there. So, that's what we're saying, to coordinate with the HOA and the engineering department to see how that can get built.
But it's, it could be built in the second phase. You could coordinate it to the first phase, and you're gonna build it to the second phase.
It's, it, this is a master plan.
This is a master plan.
It's not the face. So, just keep in mind what we're approving.
The phase will come over the next year.
Yes, this is approving the comment within the whole master plan.
So, and we agree as long as it's, you know, to take place at some point after phase one.
Of the, of the, yeah, I agree with that.
But then you're bringing phase, phase one right now, right? So, that that would be another phase. Okay, so that, that would be another phase.
And it has the same comment on the, on the actual phases.
So that, the, the change of comment seems more appropriate in.
To the other phase, right, the other phase.
Right now, we're just about the master plan.
I mean, we, we were from position, from staff's position, we want the comment to stay.
Yes, on the master.
On the master plan.
And on the, and on the phase.
And on the phase.
On the phase, that's staff's position.
Well, I agree on the master plan, but I don't agree on, on this actual phase. That's just my comments.
Okay.
Also, you know, like, you mentioned the traffic, the, eh, the two connections will have most of the traffic, there's only nineteen more lots, I mean, the thirty, thirty-one lots will be using those, and they will, we, they would be using them anyway. Eh, so it's, it's, it's not really a, it, it's not really overloading any street or anything, not at all, not even close.
Yeah, but I, I understand that it's just like for a precaution.
Yeah, I agree.
And to have a, an alternative.
Again, that's staff's position, we'd like for the comment to stay, and I mean, we, we see that, that the road needs to be built.
Perfect.
Thank you.
What are the wishes of the commission?
Go back to the, the, to approve eh, except on number three, the, the second, that phase goes to the, to the next phase, but that should, to the second phase.
This is the master plan.
Oh, the master plan, right. You can't do that, but for the, for the master plan on the next, but the phase itself can go on, and eh, the, the, what do you call, the main road going through can wait till the next one, so we just pass for the division with the two connections that they have, and then the second phase eh, to look at it in the master plan, when eh, you get to that part. Yes, I know it's not what you all recommend, but exactly eh, I agree with the first part of your statement, but the second part, it needs to be built, so.
So for it to occur in the, in the, in the, the next phase.
Right.
Correct. But the, I, I have another question because I don't know how this um, either or, the HOA, or what is legal, what do you, you state here?
The question that I have is, when originally the master plan, the original master plan was approved, and that was requested, was that not done?
I, I cannot answer that question, what we have, we have, we have a recorded plat that shows an unapproved roadway. It's gated a, at some point.
But we don't know what the conditions were when we, when that was approved for that master plan, was that road there, was it not there?
The road, the road was there.
Were they gonna build it, not build it?
The road, the road is there on the master plan, and it is on the recorded plat eh, on the La Bota side. It's just, the, when, if you go physically out there, there is a gate, and the road does not connect.
But it's, we're not taking, we're not taking, we're not taking that road off, we're just waiting to expand a little more.
That's where they're covering that.
Yeah, I, the, the, I mean, the roadway needs to be built because the, the traffic is gonna be there, I mean, they're get, they're gonna generate traffic with these lots, and then when the next phase comes in, they're gonna generate even more, because that, the next phase is gonna be.
But that's when it comes through and you can actually connect it, and this, and this particular phase that they're doing is not going to matter as much.
Well, I mean, staff's position is that the roadway, is the roadway is built.
You're asking something that Madam Chair really don't have control. I think for the, for the good of the, of the access, we need to, to start eh, getting that development so that we can eventually, right now, it doesn't serve any, eh, no, any, anything good just to give eh, here on the.
And, and I think that the, and, and more to, to your point, the, I think the, the way that that roadway will ever get built, to finally connect to eh, the future eh, river road and, and have a La Bota second out, is to be able to move forward with the plat so we can actually start eh, start building it. To be able to do that whole roadway at that width without any um concessions eh, on, on the width that needs to be built and all that, just to serve fifty-three lots. It would make it unfeasible, and in that, the phase one wouldn't even get built.
Who's, who's the owner of that road?
Chair, yeah, but my question was, who plotted that, who's the owner of that? Well, at, at that ti, at that time, it was part of the, the La Bota eh, development. And what is it now? It's, well, it's part of, it's still. Is it part of their property now? No, they, it, it abuts their property, it's adjacent. It abuts their property. That is correct. And so you're asking them to eh, you're asking us to, to put this item inside the eh, the master plan, when yet they don't really own the property, and it may never be built by either party, eh, they don't supply eh, it's way may, may, may fight you on that. And then obviously, the, the, the big point is, if River Road gets built, then it makes sense to make that connection. Without it, without River Road, it wouldn't make any sense. We understand that it's, it's outside their plat boundaries, I mean, we are, we are asking for, I mean, we're asking, are, are, the way the comment reads, I think it says eh, coordinate, you know, coordinate with engineering. You're not asking them to build it, Madam Chair, is that correct?
Exactly.
You're just asking them to, to have discussion. I'm not, I'm asking, we're asking them to build it, we're asking them to coordinate to see how that can happen.
I guess we can just clarify that.
Exactly.
Eh, point on there.
Because it says coordinate.
It says coordinate, like that's the word.
It doesn't say build it.
As, as long as it's not subject to eh, okay, getting that bill for us to, to, you know, for.
Because it's worded coordinate with the engineering department and the HOA for the La Bota development for the completion connection of the roadway. So it's not, and it's not stating that you have to build it, but you need to be coordinating with them.
I think that the comment on the, on the actual plat eh, states to, to construct it, I guess that's why we.
But we would, is that on the plat? Coming forward? Because if it is, we'll have that removed. Because again, we, we can't.
Which one is it, oh, the guy that nine?
It, it reads exactly the same.
It, it reads, it reads the same.
It reads exactly the same, you're coordinating.
And then you tell traffic safety that we need to, eh, which it says to.
No, no, no. And planning, and planning on, on the plat, it stays the same, coordinate with the engineering department.
I agree with that, coordinate, as long as it has to be built to the next, further to.
Which one did you say?
Yeah, it's a coordination, because it. As long as, Madam Chair, as long as this is precluded from filing their plat, but.
Exactly.
And, and, and we're good with that, as long as it's not eh, it's not a, a, something that we need to build because we don't have any control eh. We will coordinate, I will talk to engineering, I will contact the HOA.
Yes, that's the next year.
But eh, but yeah, really eh, eh, yeah, just to make that very clear, not, don't make it subject to being built for us to record the plat and, and stuff.
No, it, it only stays to co, coordinating, and in traffic safety, no, this, no, this.
On the plat, they have a comment.
They have a comment, okay, that's fine.
So what, what are the wishes of the commission for A, B?
Motion to, to accept the, the, the master plan.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
All against, motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, now nine A, consideration of the following preliminary plats and preliminary replats. Um, preliminary consideration of the plat of Gator Point subdivision, phase three, the intent is residential.
For the record, applicant is Martinez Land Development, engineer is topside civil group, proposed use is residential, and the zoning for this one hundred and forty-seven lot development is R one A. Location view. Aerial view. The proposed plat. Comments from planning. Fire. Traffic safety. And the proposed motion.
Madam Chair, Ricardo Villarreal, members of the commission, topside civil group, um, this is just the phase that we talked about before. So the comment is on six, eh, but in this one eh, traffic added three, which is pretty much add that east-west one. So I, we can just mirror the same comment from the master plan, um, we'd be, we'd be okay.
Thank you.
Is that okay with that?
No comments. Well, that, that was agreed upon on the, on the master plan, so.
Okay. Okay. Does anybody have any questions to the engineer? What are the wishes of the commission?
Yes, same thing, the closing, closing approved with the comments from the first.
Yeah, eh, there's just an additional comment from traffic on this one that states the same thing.
On, but I know three.
Connection is the way.
East west, but the west part one.
Yeah.
Yeah, so we, I, I think we get the point, but it's.
So do, do we need to make an amendment to that, eh, so we can accept the eh, the plat, subject to staff comments with an amendment to item three on traffic safety with the east-west connection to take place at a?
We have the east, it's just the west one.
Or the west connection to take place at a later phase. You okay with that?
Yeah, the phase to the north, yeah, on the, to the north, the next phase to the north.
Next phase to the north.
Phase, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm, I'm.
Motion second.
Motion second, all in favor?
All right.
Against, motion passes. Um, like me, preliminary consideration of the plat, of La Bota subdivision, finds addition, the intent is residential.
Yes, for the record, applicant is Cleated Group, engineer is Thora Consulting, proposed use is residential, the zoning for this fifty-eight lot development is R one. Location view. Aerial view. The proposed plat. Comments from planning. Fire. Traffic safety. Parks and leisure. And the proposed motion.
Any comments from the engineer?
Oscar Castillo, Thora Consulting, representing Cleated Group, eh, again, we control all the comments except for number one. And on this one, I would like to, we can modify eh, number one, but I think eh, a portion of La Bota parkway within La Bota subdivision, unique parking area which is connected to this development, is not fully constructed, coordinate with engineering department and HOA for the La Bota development for the connection of the roadway, but not to say completion, and then to as, also strike, strike the, as access to a fully constructed street is required, so I think if we could remove those two items.
Engineering department and the HOA for La Bota development.
Because this is phase one, so eh, just to, to remove completion.
The fully completion, yeah.
Connection of the roadway.
And then as access to a fully constructed street is required, because we do have eh, access to a fully constructed.
Development.
And so, eh, also.
The roadway as access to a fully constructed street is required.
Also eh, on traffic safety comment number six, eh, we would like to remove eh, the, add access that has not improved to this phase, we, we cannot add that part to our master plan because it's not part, it might, while client doesn't own that lot, so. So we would like to remove that, also that comment. Traffic safety comment number six. And revise note number one.
Thank you.
Thank you.
What are the wishes of the commission? Do you have any questions?
In what, in part, in, in, in the, in the, in the first phase, eh, on number one, that's what we're, eh, that's okay there. Right?
Yeah, that was the discussion on the, is.
On the, on the thing, and, and number six, if you, if they're not, a traffic eh, number six asset, if they don't own their property, can you delete that, why, or, or remove that? I don't know, why would it be there, or?
Tra, the traffic's not here, can't really speak for traffic. Madam Chair, so the question again for, for item one, as it comes down to the back of the eh, last portion of the of that phrase, as access to a fully constructed street is required, it's required for? For the subdivision, so they have access, so you're, they have two accesses. And you're, and you're saying that you're not gonna accept the plat or, or support the plat if they don't give you a fully built street, is that what you're telling us in that comment? So just, because I think, I think the proper word, if you're asking them to go and negotiate and coordinate.
Yes.
That a fully constructed street is desired, but not required, because they don't own the property and they can't construct it. So I would just change the language to desired, but not required. Well, yeah, I, I mean, they do have access on the other two. Because they, they already meet the land development comment, they have the necessary access. And so in this case, all we're asking them to do is to continue talking to the folks to the north so that they can maybe coordinate the completion of that road, but it's desired, not required, for them to move forward with this plat. Okay? Well, does that work? Does that work? Because again, I, I don't see how we can require them to build that road when they, it's not, it's not their plat.
Anyway, they need, they need to coordinate.
Yeah, we just want them to coordinate.
With eng, they need to coordinate with the engineering department and the HOA to be able to, right, anyway.
As long as it's not required.
Right, so. I would move that we accept the plat with staff comment, with an amendment to item one, to stri, strike the word required and replace it with desired.
And on traffic safety, to remove number six.
Yeah, and remove number six altogether.
I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
All against, motion passes.
Thank you. Thank you.
Nineteen, preliminary consideration of the replat of lots ten, eleven, and twelve block eighteen forty-seven, eastern division into lots ten A and twelve A block eighteen forty-seven, eastern division, the intent is residential. Do we have?
Um, yes, for the record, applicant is Estela Zaldaña, engineer is Guerra Engineering and Surveying, proposed use is residential, and the zoning for this two lot development is R three. Location view. Aerial view. The proposed plat. Comments from planning. And the proposed motion.
Is the engineer record here?
Did they submit any comments, Madam Chair?
I'm sorry, Madam?
Did the engineer record submit any comments or objections? We did not hear from the consultants here. We, we, we did reach out to him, but he was out of town. He was not available for the meeting. We did not receive any comments.
What are the wishes of the commission? Was table?
Postpone.
Postpone, move on to the other.
Madam Chair, question for staff, eh, did they ever make any comment or objection to anything you have on staff comment?
They were just advised of the meeting, of the table meeting, but they did not provide any objection.
Because I'm, I'm not necessarily inclined to, to postpone this item, eh, if there's staff comments that they object, they should have been here, so.
They're there. Motion to eh, table.
No, let's not do that, just, if they, if there are comments on there that they didn't want, they should have been here, okay? And so.
Yeah, oh, on our comment, on our calls, he did say that he was out of town and that he would be sending an email, but it appears he wasn't able to. We didn't receive anything.
Go table.
Right, again, my concern is that if we don't take action on these, the clock is ticking, you all have thirty days to, to take action on it. From the time he submits his request.
This has come up before, whether tabling is considered action, you know?
I don't believe that it is, and everything I've read to date does not, does, that's not action, we, we've not addressed any of the items that are on the comments, all we're doing is saying, we're not gonna talk about it, especially if you do a table, because table stops all discussion and moves it to a point in the future when somebody can bring it back. In a postponement, we can make time certain, but again, we're not taking any action. How is that action? All we're saying is we don't wanna talk about it until tomorrow or next week, but the clock has already started, he's already submitted, asking for some type of a comment or action on this, on this plat. My concern is that if eh, if we continue to do this, that, that delay could put us in a position where he gets a plat approval, or we get to legalize it with him, because we didn't take any action within the thirty days, so.
I guess, to allay your concern, I mean, with regard to the, the tabling, do you have any questions that they would need to answer? That, you know, maybe if you don't have any, or if the commission doesn't have any questions, that the, that the applicant needs eh, to answer, um, then maybe you would, the commission may feel comfortable in taking action.
I, I feel comfortable taking action, because again, if, if there was a concern of one of these staff comments, he would, I don't, either would have emailed you or felt the importance to be here, and so, um, and he can always come back and, and.
Exactly, if you approve it and he has concerns later on, he can resubmit.
At least we've started the clock, and that way, there's, that's action.
Okay, so what are?
It extends Gerald's clock, not his, right?
So what are the wishes of the commission?
Motion to accept eh, the preliminary plat with staff comments.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All against?
I'm against.
You too, yes.
I think they should be here. There's a reason why we do this, and if not, you know, everybody just stay home and let whatever we want to do.
And there's something to the conditions that are put up.
If they don't want to adjust the conditions, that's not it.
Doesn't benefit them to stay home, so I agree.
Okay, motion passes.
Okay.
Um, nineteen, preliminary consideration of the mine's plat, the intent is industrial.
Yes, for the record applicant is Dante Garza, engineer is Daniel Garza.
Daniel Gomez.
Gomez, I thought the choice, I was like something's wrong, sorry. Proposed uses industrial and the zoning for this one lot development is AG. Location view. Aerial view. The proposed plat. Comments from planning. And the proposed motion.
The engineer record.
Good evening, I'm Daniel Gomez, from Daniel Gomez, you know. And I do concur with the, all of the comments, we will, we'll, we'll provide a new name for the plat.
Um, what are the wishes of the commission? Do you have any questions for the engineer?
Motion to approve the plat subject to comments.
First, Mr. Angel, second, Mr. Garcia, all in favor?
Aye, aye.
All against? Motion passes. Um, ninety, preliminary consideration of the replat lot one, block two, pinnacle industrial center. FM forty, fourteen seventy-two, unit eight into lot one A and lot two B. Block two pinnacle industrial center FM fourteen seventy-two, unit eight. The intent is for industrial and billboard.
Yes, for the record applicant is FM fourteen seventy-two investments. Engineer is Piquelinares, the proposal is for industrial and a billboard. The zoning for this two lot development is M one. Location view. Aerial view. Proposed plat. Comments from planning. And the proposed motion.
Daniel Council, Jonathan Masco of Cyber Engineering, uh, we concur with staff comments and I'm here if any questions or concerns.
Thank you. What are the wishes of the commission?
Motion to accept the plat, um, with staff comments.
Second. Second by Cindy, all in favor?
Aye.
All against? Motion passes. Okay. E, nine? Nine F, preliminary considerations of replat of lot one, two, three, four. Uh, block one town north center into lots one A and two A, block one town north center, the intent is commercial.
Yes, for the record applicant is C S L Investments, um, attention to, uh, Cesar Lumraña. Engineer Ricardo Ramos, proposed use is commercial and the zoning for this two lot development is before. Location view. Aerial view. The proposed plat. Comments from planning. Engineer, traffic safety, parks and leisure, text dot, and the, the second one was the one that we added after the packet. And the proposed motion.
Thank you.
Uh, good evening, Mariano Ricardo Ramos, and I'm the engineer record for this project. And did you show the last comment from Texas?
Oh, he moved the.
Okay, I'm sorry.
But it's right there.
We only had one issue as far as the, the access from text out right away. The original plat had a write-in only access. And we put in into this replat, um, that there was some conversations that, you know, we might need to take it out or something like that, but text out replied and said that we're okay with that. Writing access on, put text out right away. Are the other comments we, we concur?
Okay, thank you. What are the wishes of the commission? Do we have any questions?
Again, uh, the last item was, um, a potential acceleration, deceleration, is that what it? But you want them to coordinate with text dot?
That was a, that was an item from engineering, I believe. I don't, they're not here, but just the coordination with text dot for that, and then text dot did, text dot did provide some, some comments.
But they did provide a response?
Yes, they did. And we did, we did, um, is it, uh? Text, it says, well, it says need to coordinate with text out when ready to submit a driveway access permit. That was a comment, it's there, and then we did some, received an additional comment which was highlighted. We did email it to you.
Right.
Okay, and that was, and but it is text out right away, so I, they are the ultimate say on that portion of the roadway, but they did.
Sure, and you're okay with that? Good motion to accept, uh, with staff comments and text dot's note. Second.
Second by Mr. Casares.
He heard that. And a quick discussion, Madam Chair, before you vote. If engineering had an issue with this, they need to be here too. To defend, to defend their position. Looks good for the, private engineers, good for our engineers too.
Yes, so, um, motion by Mr. Vilmales, second by Casares. All in favor?
Aye, aye.
All against? Thank you. Um, consideration of the following final plats and final replats, can I have a motion to hear items ten A, ten B, ten C?
You missed ninety.
Ninety?
Ninety? Ay, pero no, ay, ay, mi hijo. Uh, nine G, preliminary consideration of San Isidro Southwest Loop twenty, commercial plat, the intent is commercial.
Sorry, applicant is San Isidro Southwest, engineers Slay Engineering Company, proposed use is commercial and the zoning for this five lot development is before. Location view. Aerial view. The proposed plat. Comments from planning. Fire, parks and leisure, text dot. And the proposed motion.
Good evening, Evan Garcia, uh, work with Slay Engineering, and we concur with all comments.
Any questions for the engineer? Any questions for staff? What are the wishes of the commission? Motion to approve subject to comments.
Second.
A motion and second, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign, motion carries. The next item is, uh. Motion to hear ten A, ten B, ten C, ten D.
Second.
Uh, motion and second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Both same sign, motion carries. Motion to approve, all of ten A, B, C, and D. And a second, and a second from Mr. Casares. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign, motion carries.
Oh, see. Consideration of the following pla- final plats and final replats, can I have?
On subdivision.
Hey.
We already blew through it.
We already did that.
We, we need to read, we need, we need to read.
Number eleven. Perdoname. Ay, send me.
Sorry, we need to read the, we need to read.
You need to read, read them.
Into the record.
Into the record.
Yo, otto. I, I can read them.
Thank you.
The final consideration of Ma- Ma- P industrial plat, the intent is industrial. Ten B is final consideration of the replat of lot one, block one, Las Aldeas commercial phase one. Into lots one A and lot one B, block one, Las Aldeas commercial phase one, the intent is commercial. Ten C is final consideration of the J and H commercial park subdivision phase two. The intent is commercial. Ten D is final consideration of the plat of Kilam Industrial Park, unit twenty B, and the intent is industrial. And then we moved, uh, to the model rules, correct?
Say again?
The models were also approved. So, not yet.
Not yet, eleven not yet. So.
So can I have a motion to approve items ten A, ten B, ten C, ten D, together?
We have.
Positivos?
Eleven.
Motion. Eleven A.
Ah, okay. Consideration of the motion subdivision compliance, can I have a motion to approve?
A move.
For move, here I am. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Go aye.
Next item, consideration of an extension to the following final plats and final replats. Can I have a motion to approve?
You need to read it.
You need to read it.
Ah, no, don't collect it. Consideration of an extension of the final plat approval of the U I S D Juan Roberto Ramirez Middle School plat. The intent is educational. The request is to extend the scheduled expiration date from June sixteen to December sixteen, two thousand twenty-four.
Motion to grant the extension?
Second. By Mr. Angel, all in favor?
Aye.
And then, good.
Number thirteen.
Number thirteen, directors, and now, do we have directors? Comments?
Yes, we do.
What's the notes in, in the presentation?
Yeah, we have the presentation.
Are we going to do the direction board?
Yes, please.
Or the presentation, okay. Really, very, very quickly, just super quickly. Um, just wanted to give, uh, the commission an update at the, uh, most recent city council, well, not the most recent, we've had a special meeting in between. But at, at a recent city council meeting, uh, council has mo- moved, um, to combine for all intents and purposes, the planning and zoning department and the building development services department. So, uh, building development services will now be a division of, uh, the planning department. This is in an effort to increase efficiency and effectiveness, interdepartmental communication, and just to perform better. For all of us to do that.
And who's in charge of that?
Uh, Panes.
That's correct. That's correct.
That's what I wanted.
Good job.
Congratulations, thank you.
Oh, and I guess just really quick, we haven't seen him, but, um, Mr. Roland Lozano was, uh, recently, he is our interim building official.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Motion to bring back item A, presentation by text department, just for a second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Welcome.
Mistress, uh, good afternoon, Roberto Rodriguez, Director of Transportation Planning and Development for text dot. I'm going to make a, um, a presentation regarding the projects we have under construction and under development, you know, within the Laredo, uh, area. Okay, just a, just a quick overview, the Laredo district will cover eight counties, all the way from Laredo, Webb County, Duval, La Salle, De Mitzavala, Maverick, where we have Eagle Pass. Quinny and, um, Del Rio area, which is Valverde County. We, um, have about a thousand and sixty-nine bridges, which eight hundred and seventy-eight are on system, which means are on the state highways. And about a hundred and ninety-one, um, off system on city and county roads. Eight international border crossings and two railroad crossings. What you see right there in the maps is some of our, our major corridors, as you can tell, you know, in Laredo. That's what, uh, we have our main, main corridor, which is Interstate thirty-five. Um, feature, uh, Interstate sixty-nine that we're developing from the, um, World Trade Bridge. Going along, uh, the existing US fifty-nine or Loop twenty, and then continue all the way to, to Houston, WI sixty-nine W. We have the recently designated Interstate twenty-seven, which also starts at bridge number two. It goes along thirty-five and then split up at Barnum market eighteen and eighty-three. Goes eighty-three to Carrizo, US two seventy-seven, uh, to Eagle Pass. Continues along US two seventy-seven, past Del Rio, goes all the way north to Lubbock, so that, that's Interstate twenty-seven has been designated already. And what's, uh, in the future, uh, the designation of Interstate, uh, two, which starts at Loop twenty and, um, the business fifty-nine or Saunders. And goes south on, on the existing Loop twenty, will extend south through the extension of Loop twenty goes all the way to, to the valley. So will be, I guess, the only city where four interstates are born, you know, with, with the US. Um, let's just, just make sure, and, uh, what I mentioned right now, our, our main, main corridors, we also have some other main corridors, and Eagle Pass and Del Rio. As US fifty, uh, US fifty-seven and US ninety. But in Laredo, we have other corridors such as Stay Highway eighty-four, recently led, um, the outer loop. Also, and I'm going to talk about briefly some of these projects. What I'm going to be covering is the following, the projects under construction, under development that are funded. That means we got constru- construction funds and are pretty much led, uh, ready to go to construction within the next ten years and what's, uh, not funded, and what we have for the long-range projects. Just to mention, uh, right now, in the Laredo district, the entire district, we have about one point one billion dollars under construction. Um, and, uh, just with that, about, it just went up today, actually, five million. So it will be eight hundred and fifty-one millions, it's just within Laredo and Webb County. Out of those one.
And this is what it has already been funded, right?
That's actually under construction right now. That's, that's actually what you see out there on, on the highways.
On the highways.
You know, the project which is very close to, to be completed, our, um, I thirty-five, um, the overpass, uh, close to Chilo, the overpass on the railroad to the rec connectors, we call direct, um, they're supposed to be, uh, opening those up within the next, uh, month, you know? This will be opening there, finalized in some of the, what we call the punch release, you know, some of the items that we get pending and some of the paint that, that we gotta do. That's a project that was, um, a hundred and fifteen million dollars, which should be completed, uh, very soon. Also under construction, we have another major project that led last August, three hundred and forty-four million dollars. US fifty-nine winding to I sixty-nine. Um, that includes, uh, four overpasses, um, includes Chilo, Delmar, University, and Jackman overpasses. Those, that's, that's under construction. Uh, we're on the first, first phase, which is all, uh, we, we did a joint bid with the city of Laredo. We felt that was the most effective way to let this project, and, um, we, we joint bided all the, the city, uh, utilities, water and sewer. So that's why you're seeing right now out there being constructed, you know? A lot of the utilities are being relocated and the, the contractors relocating the, the water and sewer lines. Uh, completion is a, uh, long project, we're talking about four and a half to five years complete construction. We'll have, we'll have construction on the loop for, for a loop.
For some time.
Next, another project that we have under construction is the Stay Highway three fifty-nine winding. Um, if, if you're realizing of three fifty-nine, also that area has been, has been growing quite a bit. So we'll continue for another, um, three miles with the same configuration that we have, which is two lanes in each direction with a turning lane in the middle. And then after the thir- three miles, we're going to go to a divided highway, kind of setting that, the, the pattern, you know, for future growth on three fifty-nine from here to, to Heavenville, you know, having a four-linked divided highway. So that was a project that also led, uh, last August with about close to fifty million dollars in construction.
Wow.
Another project that we work very closely with the city of Laredo, actually, the, 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 the city helped out with the acquisition of the right of way. And is helping us now with a, um, utility relocation. It's the Stay Highway eighty-four project, also known as the H R Ruthinger Highway, which will connect fourteen seventy-two to I thirty-five. This project led, um, last month, early last month, for about a hundred and forty, about a hundred and twenty-seven million, that's what, that was the estimate, a hundred and forty-seven. It's going to be a, a four-linked highway, two lanes in each direction, divided highway, leaving enough space in the middle for a future freeway, if needed. This is our oversized overweight corridor, which means we're putting about thirteen, fourteen inches of concrete on the pavement. Because it's going to handle all the oversized overweight. Um, it, the entire roadway will be, uh, concrete, and, um, like I said, right now, the contractor, uh, is the same contractor that has the existing project on thirty-five that is just being completed, so within a month, he's moving all his equipment and everybody to, to start this project, and hopefully they, they can expedite this project. Las Minas, that's, that's right before thirty-three, thirty-eight, Peñitas Road.
Ah, Peñitas.
Fourteen seventy-two, right before you had the flashing beacon that splits up two, thirty-three, Peñitas, right before that.
Ay, isn't it?
That is the intersection, yes, and it's going to connect. On, um, on thirty-five, there is a connection, actually, it's going to be a connection to Beltway, which is Mount Market thirteen, Uniroyal. But the, the corridor is going to go all the way to Mount Market fifteen, about fifteen, fifteen and a half. That's what we're gonna, we're gonna be, um, connecting on thirty-five.
This is going to help a lot.
This will help a lot with the congestion of fourteen seventy-two, all this, this development that is happening, you know, they don't have to come and drive down on fourteen seventy-two to get on thirty-five.
Yeah.
In fourteen seventy-two, sixty-nine, thirty-five, now they'll be able to take this route to, to get straight to, to, uh, thirty-five. Now what I'll cover is projects that we have under development that will be letting and, and we're, we got funding already for that. The, the next one, you know, is going to be our, um, two interchanges, actually. There's one at Uniroyal interchange on thirty-five. As you all know, that, that, that's a very congested intersection. Those bridges were built for, um, county roads back in the days, so we're going to pretty much replace that bridge at Uniroyal. Instead of having the three lanes that we have in the bottom, we're going to go to about six lanes on the, on the bottom of the bridge, so we can have more traffic flowing out of the, of the industrial park. And also with this project, for our first phase of the project, is building that. And also with this project, for our first phase of the project, is building that interchange at the new Stay Highway eighty-four connection. So first phase will be to build that interchange, so we can use also that one as a detour on our traffic control, and then we're gonna come back to Moda, Uniroyale, and replace it with a new bridge. That's a project which is about two hundred and fifty-four million dollars, and it's letting in February of two thousand twenty-five.
Wow.
Okay. Also another project that is coming in two thousand twenty-five, it's the completion of the direct connectors. We had, uh, initially, we started with one more direct connector at thirty-five and Loop twenty, then we came to two, and then we finally decided, you know what, minus, let's, let's do all three, so we can just get out of that intersection and once and for all.
Plan.
No, so we're gonna be building the last three missing direct connector, which is number three, number four, number six, we call them. And that's gonna cost about a hundred and fourteen million dollars. And, um, that will let in, in November. Um, hopefully, we, we can accelerate, I mean, we'll, we'll always looking for, for ways to accelerate our projects, and that will complete that, all the direct connectors at that, that intersection of, uh, thirty-five and I sixty-nine W. Another project that we're working on for September of two thousand twenty-six is the winding of thirty-five. Um, this is where the Uniroyale, uh, Stay Highway eighty-four project ended, which is about mile marker, um, right before mile marker sixteen. With that project, we're also winding thirty-five to three lanes, you know, all the way to this, this point. And then with this project, we're gonna continue with the winding of thirty-five north, all the way to mile marker, um, about, about mile marker twenty. But at the same time, we have a, um, railroad, um, underpass, which has a, a vertical clearance limitation. So what we're doing now, we're going over the, the track. Instead of, uh, going under, we're replacing it with a new bridge, just the same thing we did on the, on thirty-five, south of Loop twenty. We were under, now we're going over. At the same time, we are realigning that curve. Realize it's a very sharp curve in that, in that area. So we're realigning it, we're going over, adding three lanes. And at the same time, um, and with the new development or the new upcoming of Interstate twenty-seven, we are doing direct connectors to eighty-three. So instead of having to go out through the frontis road and then get on eighty-three towards Carrizo, it's gonna be direct connectors, um, to go.
That's mile marker eighteen, no?
Right. Yeah, mile marker eighteen, yeah. You won't have to do, I mean, you have to go through the travel center area.
Yes.
You will not have to do that anymore. You're gonna have direct connector going to eighty-three.
Por arriba.
Yes. Because there's, there's a lot more traffic coming out of that, that area, you know, on, on eighty-three. That's a, close to a three hundred million dollar project. So, um, what you're gonna see, you know, in addition to the eight hundred and something million dollar construction we got, we add in all this other project that's gonna easily, uh, gonna go over a billion, you know?
Billion.
Billion and a half, in, in, in Laredo. So we're hoping to have this project, um, going to letting in September of two thousand twenty-six. Another project we also got funding for is, is just where the previous project ended on eighty-three, because now we're gonna be winding eighty-three to four-linked divided, in preparation for Interstate twenty-seven. So pretty much, um, it, we, with this project, it started as a typical four-linked divided highway, but now with the Interstate twenty-seven, we're gonna go back and acquire a little more right-of-way that we're gonna need, uh, so that we can leave a space for main lanes or, or on the center. So we're gonna be, uh, acquiring about four hundred foot right-of-way. We're gonna be building the, well, become the future frontis roads, you know? But it's gonna be a four-linked divided, and they'll all come back in the future to build the maintenance in the middle. But we're gonna leave everything prepared, the interchanges, you know, for the future, future development. At the same time, you know, this project is gonna take us just south of two fifty-five. And we're already working at the plan.
Pasando Camino Colombia.
Yes, the, the old Camino Colombia. Now, we're working on the plans already to go from that one all the way to Stay Highway forty-four, which is just north of the checkpoint on, on eighty-three. While we also looking at those plans, as well as the, we're gonna have to replace that bridge in eighty-three on two fifty-five, because it's, will not accommodate that. Yeah. Not gonna accommodate the four-linked. This project that is funded already, got about fifty point, uh, four million dollars. And that's, is we just, the reason, you know, you see this kind of, it looks like, uh, it's only fifty million dollars, yes, we just reconstructed eighty-three. So we're not gonna touch that, we're just gonna build the other side, you know? So that's why it's, a lot of people, I mean, it's, uh, it's fifty million enough, you know, we're just doing the new segment.
Yes, they, they just repaved it and, and made it.
We just rehabbed the, the eighty-three. The other one coming up, um, this, uh, November, actually, it's, uh, in south of Laredo, the Loop twenty, uh, the Lomas, um, del Sur interchange. Um, that's where the new, uh, sports complex from the city of Laredo is, is being built. So, um, this became our priority in, in Loop twenty for, um, the need of an interchange. So we're gonna have that, that interchange right there, uh, with a cost of forty-two million dollars. Loop twenty, Lomas, that's November, two thousand twenty-four. Good thing about this project, was able to move very quickly, because there's no additional right-of-way. So there, there were the utilities, we already placed outside of the area, where we knew this project was coming. And environmentally, of course, everything is within our right, right-of-way thing. That helped expedite this type of project. And then what we have in two thousand twenty-six, late two thousand twenty-six, or, um, is the last, the next portion of the, uh, US fifty-nine upgrade, which is that, uh, from just south of Jackman, all the way to, um, Business fifty-nine or Saunders. We, we have to break this, this loop into two segments, because on the south portion, we have the, uh, we're acquiring the armory, we're acquiring the U I S D kitchen. There's a lot more coordination that has to be done with the airport. Um, so those things takes few years.
The one that circulated with the, with the yellow, is it that one?
Yeah, the stuff that is.
And, and part of the golf course, right?
It's good.
And part of the golf course?
The golf course and the Casablanca Little State Park. So it has a lot of moving parts, the project. So that's the reason we, at that time, we say, hey, we cannot, we cannot delay the rest of the project, the, the loop. Let's break it up in two pieces, so we can start doing the north, and then we do the south. We know that the longer we wait, the more expensive we get, and, and, and we really need to get moving on, on the project. So this project will be, we come after, after.
That one says that it's partially funded.
It is part, it was, it was partially funded. We are right now in the process of what we call the U T P, the, when we are requesting funds, and they inform us that on the draft, but it's not officially until August, it'll be, be approved, the whole funding for that. Like I said, it, it's, it's very close to letting in July twenty-six. All right. Another project that we have under design, we recently hired, uh, a few consultants to work on this project, is the US fifty-nine winding to a four-linked, uh, divided highway. This goes from, um, the intersection of, um, US fifty-nine and Saunders, about twenty miles out of Laredo. This is a three hundred and two million dollar project. Now, right now, we're in the, in the process with the consultant, actually looking at realigning possibly US fifty-nine. Instead of going all the way down to Saunders, somewhere around Del Mar, cut, cut across the, um, uh, cut across right here on US fifty-nine and connect, and that way we can, uh, we can, uh, we will not have to go back on US fifty-nine and relocate all those residents and businesses that we might have to, because this, this will be a freeway. Plus, I mean, we have, uh, some of the geometric restrictions right there at that intersection, you know?
El famoso outer loop.
Well, there, because if you do that, you would like, with the Casablanca barroom and all those houses there, you would.
Correct. There is a subdivision there, we have to go back in.
Yeah.
Those residences.
We get some proof houses.
So, we, we feel that there, there is, there are options that we can actually, a shorter route, when we can connect somewhere here in the middle, and that will help, you know, deviate all the traffic. Our idea is, is there's gonna be a lot of commercial traffic going through there. The sooner you can get them out of the, uh, air, of the city, you know, the better, get them out through, through another route. And, uh, this is, right now, September two thousand thirty, I've been talking with the consultants and everyone, can we make it twenty-nine, twenty-eight? Plus, it has right-of-way acquisition, it has a lot of, uh, a lot of, uh, utilities, stuff like that. So we'll, we'll, we'll try to expedite it as much as we can in this project. Also, the price that we have, uh, uh, we're developing and working on it, but they don't have any construction, uh, construction funds at all. One of them is continuing the, the winding of thirty-five from mile marker twenty to mile marker twenty-five, and the other portion is from mile marker twenty-five to mile marker thirty. Just to, for reference, you know, uh, the water patrol checkpoint is on mile marker twenty-nine, so we're going about a mile more. This project, you know, which is becoming one of the top priorities for the district, we're, we're gonna, we have funds all the way to mile marker twenty. Then we're gonna kinda prioritize twenty-five to thirty, and then come back and do twenty, twenty-five because of the checkpoint situation that we have. Um, so this is one that's taking a lot of, um, um, high priority, you know, the projects for us to develop and to request funds. This is about a hundred and thirty-six million dollars, and this will make improvements to the three lanes and improvements right there at the exit with the checkpoint, um, at the water patrol checkpoint. But where we have consultants working on this and developing plans for, for these projects. The other, uh, that we have a consultant working on is the V I C U or P A, you know, the, the, the R M A is working with, uh, with the city and, uh, part of a Techstat, and, and we want to get V I C U road from fourteen seventy-two to thirty-five. So right now, we're developing the, the, uh, the plans for the V I C U interchange. We, uh, recently, through the N P O, allocated sixty million dollars.
That's what I was gonna tell you.
But, but we're still quite short, so that's why it's not, hasn't jumped to the, to the next phase. Hopefully, this year around or next year, we can start having some of that, that funding. And obviously, we know that two thousand twenty-nine is kinda, kinda too far away. We're looking at accelerating this, but until we get more of the funding and more of the design, you know, the, at least the finalized schematic, we can determine, you know, a new, uh, letting date, and a more precise, uh, estimate. Right now, we're saying seventy-three million dollars. We're gonna be eighty, ninety, once we get more, more, more into.
It was fifty when I remember.
Yeah.
Yes, it was a will.
Now, another project we have, we're looking at is actually Carriers Drive, uh, Bridge, the winding, uh, building some U-turns, um, making it even wider, that bridge, but that's, that's also in the plans. Uh, we have a consultant that just barely started to look at options. That'll be about fifty-five million dollars allocated for this project. Um, the one that we also have a consultant working on, but we don't have the, the plans for, is the Cuatro Vientos extension. This is Loop twenty, uh, right now, it ends at, it ends in Maganaheim. So we have a consultant that is continuing that connection all the way to the, where the Laredo outer loop will be, and then connecting to, um, US eighty-three with a connection to, um, um, Rio Bravo and Los Cineso, which is, um, Espejo Molina, I think that's, that's where it's called. That street connecting straight all the way to, to Loop twenty. This is about three hundred million dollar project. Um, we decided, the Techstat decided to move forward with this, because it's, we need the extension of Loop twenty to the south. In addition, we know that if Bridge four-five gets approved, um, this is gonna be the first way out of the traffic, you know? We know we're not gonna have the entire outer loop constructed, but at least we have alternates for that traffic to take either eighty-three or go directly to the twenty, and, and drive to, uh, north Laredo. Now, long-range projects, you know, we have the, the complete outer loop, which, um, it goes all the way, starts at, at the International Bridge four-five. When in our case right now, since there's no presidential permit, we start at eighty-three. So our, right now, our plans, you know, start eighty-three, go up to, um, three fifty-nine, then go to fifty-nine, and then at the end, connect to thirty-five. Now, um, just to, to mention, recently, we, we, uh, we added another extension right here on the north. Since, um, US eighty-three became Interstate twenty-seven, we feel that there has to be a connection of twenty-seven all the way down to the loop. So what you're gonna see here in the north is two, two, two legs, one going to two fifty-five and one connecting eighty-three. Yeah, so that way, the traffic that, that say you're coming from the valley and you wanna go to Carrizo Springs or Eagle Pass, you will definitely just loop, go around, and connect to eighty-three on the north and continue.
Pero este no tiene ni, ni fecha.
No, the, we don't have it, it's just to construct the, the two-lane, it's about one point four two billion dollars.
Ay, casi nada.
Yeah, so we have, we have to go in, in phases, you know? I know, um, we, um, in conversations, uh, a few years back with the N P O, we have to prioritize all our projects. And in this case, um, the N P O had prioritized the segment between three fifty-nine and fifty-nine.
And fifty-nine.
Because they needed another alternate route in that area.
Claro.
Um, but, um, we know that if the Bridge four-five gets approved, maybe the whole segment all the way might have to be prioritized. That's it. Yeah. Um, something else we're looking at is, um, F and fourteen seventy-two corridor. We actually have two consultants on board looking at, uh, uh, developing alternates for, um, all the way from, um, the Loop twenty or sixty-nine all the way to two fifty-five. You know, we broke it down into a segment, because we know from about thirty-three, thirty-eight north, it's a lot easier of a design, you know? If we have enough right-of-way, we can go and build a full freeway. But from then south, we have other challenges, it's right-of-way, stuff that is already being developed, that we need to look at different alternates that, that we're looking at. But the south, we also have a, a, a letting day. We just at the early phases of developing the schematic on how, how this will look, you know, in the future. Um, then, uh, obviously, the longer route will be, keep winding thirty-five all the way to San Antonio. Um, in Laredo district, we cover Webb and LaSalle County, which is about mile marker eighty-two. So we continue winding thirty-five, but it will be about a one point seven seven billion dollars to keep winding thirty-five. Now, this is, those are today's prices, of course.
Right.
Twenty-thirty, uh, twenty-forty, I don't know what that, will be, but there's, there's quite a bit of miles, you know? But, um, fifty-two miles, you know, to, to build, so. Plus, we have to replace a lot of those bridges that are not meeting criteria anymore. Well, this is nothing that do Laredo, this is US fifty-seven upgrades, we're looking actually from Eagle Pass to thirty-five. And we're looking at Del Rio, actually, from, um, Del Rio to San Antonio, you know? The commissioners have asked us to look at winding these two roads to a four-linked divided. To also help with the, with the Port to Plains Initiative or the I twenty-seven initiative. That's, that's kind of the, our long, our long, uh, plan, you know, to have Interstate twenty-seven, of course, or thirty-five, uh, going central Texas, I guess, and then you have to the, to the east, having sixty-nine, and then twenty-seven to the, to the west. But you also need the east and west corridors through, through the district. So those, this will be the, this are the corridors that will help with the traffic.
Tengo una pregunta.
Sure.
Nunca salió del Riverbank Road?
Well, Riverbank Road, you know, I know you all mentioned about it. That's, that's not a Techstat project, that's a Laredo, R M A project.
R M A.
R M A project, that they hire a consultant to, um, look at different alternatives. They're looking at that, working also with the N P O, because that will be like a city street, that's a city street project. So that they have their, their own alternatives, you know?
Well, thank you for being here. We've been waiting for this presentation for, I don't know, when? Since, I don't know when, I know, I know you guys are very busy, but there's a lot of, um, uh, comments that involve Techstat. And one of my petitions is for you to at least come once a month.
Sure, we can, we can give you some.
Once a month, so you could, um, give us retro-alimentation in everything that, that, that happens with them, because a lot of, a lot of issues that we have is that Techstat doesn't this, and Techstat, and we don't, we're just here, and we, we only, um, go through what the engineer is saying, or, or the planning knows that talked to you. But there are certain things that have to be addressed directly from you, from you, your perspective, right? And your know-how. So I just really thank you. I'm sorry that, um, a lot of people left.
Not at all.
But, but, um, it is very important that we, as commissioners, know what, what everything, where everything is connecting. Because, for example, right now, you told us, no, there's this road, of, we just approved, I don't know, a hundred houses there. Where, 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 where's it, we're gonna go, you know, like?
Yeah, we work very closely with, with the planning department about every week, you know, to go over their stuff. And, and, and of course, with all the, the engineering community, they'll, they'll go busy with us before they start developing some of these things that, so that they don't have to go back and change their stuff. We don't want them to go to the city and planning, get all this approved, and then go to Techstat, oops, I have to go back again.
And then go back in.
Because now, Techstat is requesting this. So we try to work very closely with them, so that, that, um, avoiding, you know, all these changes and, and just move faster, you know? Um, actually, yes, I mean, uh, we, we'll make it a point to be here, but once a month. Actually, my boss has to, had another commitment, he, he just left, uh, our district engineer. But, um, and we're just chatting right now, like, we need to come more often, and we're discussing, I mean.
¿E te mandan las tics?
Yeah, yeah. Either it will be me, or, or, or actually the, the area engineer, which is the one in charge of construction, and maybe our traffic director, director of operations, because he is the one that approves most of the driveways, most of these connections go through.
Yeah, that's usually our question for the traffic guy, you know?
Exactly, yeah.
Some, to someone, so, thank you.
Well, thank you so much.
Well, thank you anytime.
I don't know if you are going to give us the presentation, because I saw a lot of.
The presentation is safe here, I can, I can leave it there.
Because a lot of the engineers were like taking pictures of, of the, of the, of the screen, right?
I'm sure if staff could just present that, grab that and send it to us, that'd be great.
Yes.
Absolutely.
Sure, we will.
Thank you.
Well, thank you so much.
Oh, thank you, thank you.
Welcome to the jury.
All in favor?